Oh no, we represent some.
Hey, Rick Serra, Sewer Department.
I didn't get my picture, correct?
No, that's fine. We had talked a little bit last week about replacing the wastewater truck. It unfortunately will be in the work articles in the end of town meeting. We got busy, we get in there. And we talked about probably doing a special town meeting with the ambulance. Again, we got busy, it happened. We're at the stage now where I wanna move forward with this because winter's coming. Unfortunately, I'm not finding a whole lot of vehicles out there. They're very, very limited. I've been on the phone for the last two days and we probably found a couple of trucks, possibly. The problem is with our way of doing business, doing special town meeting, talking money, doing special town meeting, it's a long process, couple of weeks. And by that time, the truck is probably sold already. You know what I'm saying? It's the hard part there. We're in a market right now where very hard to find vehicles. Special order of vehicle like the Western Star, we're waiting eight, nine, ten months now. I just wanted to guide to the council, what do we wanna do moving forward? Do we want to do a special town meeting, appropriate certain amount of money? That let me go out there and try to find something that we could use and probably make a purchase between Luke Nancy and I.
Times are definitely changed, Rick. Now, um, is this, this is the type of vehicle you're looking for?
That is a type of vehicle.
And I drafted a few notes on it.
Yeah, would you explain to me how that would work with our new e-watering system and?
With our new plant upgrade, we will no longer be hauling liquid sledge up into fields. So we're gonna be, um, probably be a lot drier. So this material that's gonna be coming out of the plant now is gonna look more like compost. So we're gonna have an option of hauling it to either Conjono. Are you giving me something, correct me now there, but whatever it's called, Conjono.
A lot of people just call it Green River County.
Or Tricommunity, one of the two. So we're gonna be trucking it to outside of Bangor. Going this route here, it was more economical for us. Cause the talk with the engineers in preliminary time, they talked possibly of purchasing a wheeler truck. Uh, then issue came up with how are we gonna load a wheeler truck with a compact tractor? Because part of this project is purchasing a compact tractor to work in the greenhouse. They moved the material around and a small compact tractor, you gotta know thirty-five horsepower tractor is not gonna dump a tow wheeler truck. They talked about doing, uh, like a loading ramp. The location of the loading ramp, uh, wasn't feasible, was alongside the river. I had a lot of issues with it, uh, safety for my employees being over in the bank and this and that. The other option was possibly using one of our wheeler trucks, using our loader. Taking the, uh, the compact tractor, loading into the bucket of the wheel loader, loading into the truck. You know, it was just one thing after another. I, I wanted it to be as much self-sufficient as possible. So I think the best avenue for us was to look at getting the compact tractor, getting this tech truck here, that five fifty or a Dodge fifty-five hundred, something that's heavy duty, something that's fairly new. Uh, something that's, uh, can all the trailers need be, um, haul our, our material to Canada. Again, we're gonna be international boundary, we're gonna be abiding by their laws, their rules, their regulations, the road. Uh, or we wanna try community, still could be, uh, a distance for us to travel. Uh, the wastewater truck is a two thousand twelve. Uh, doesn't have a whole lot of miles, but I do wanna keep it into the public works. And I think the best hit for that would be for Hollis up at the recycling center. He'll be more, uh, self-sufficient up there, having a truck up there with a plow. When he comes in the morning, the truck will be there for him. And, uh, he can do leave the plow direct instead of relying on us during a snowstorm. Um, he having sent somebody else up there while we're trying to pick up snow, whatever. I thought it'd be more efficient, so.
So this would haul the trailer, which would haul the compost material?
Yes, trailer or we, another issue we're heading is compact tractors. They're far between, uh, the pricing that we thought we're gonna get for a compact tractor, that forty thousand is not coming in. The tractor's coming in at fifty, fifty-five thousand because supply. I initially was gonna just do a regular trailer, a regular truck, maybe a flatbed. But for the little bit amount of money, putting a dump on there, like I think it's like five hundred bucks compared to the two between having a flatbed and that dump. I thought it would be more, uh, feasible or, uh, user friendly for the town to get a dump body on it.
But we would haul, you'd have to haul a dump trailer?
Right.
So we have to purchase a dump trailer also?
That is part of the grant, part of the project.
It is part of.
It will not come out of directly out of my surplus or CIP. The tractor and the dump trailer is part of the, the grant.
That's diesel, I would take it?
That is a diesel.
How many yards are you anticipating of dumping?
I talked to Jim Leighton and he's anticipating probably twenty to thirty yards a year. But this is gonna be totally different for us. Cause I produce more sledge than he does, Limeson does.
But that's what he's anticipating based on your analysis?
That's a, a guess limit from the engineers. We'll know more after we do it, process it.
At what time do you empty it out? You know what I mean? How thick does the bed have to be before you remove it? The question is how many yards you have at that point?
It's gonna be a learning, cause I've never done this before. And the only other community that does it is Limeson. And again, they're not the capacity that I have, so. I, I'm gonna, if I had to guess, maybe once we apply the sledge on drying beds, we're gonna be waiting for a couple of weeks. We're gonna have to tractor scrape it all off, probably stockpile it and probably another pod. There's gonna be four pods in this building. We'll stockpile it into one pod and actually when we had the time to do it, if we can make a load out of the truck, the dump trailer, then we'll, we'll haul the Conjono or we'll haul it to Tricommunity, so.
So to build on what he's asking, how many times a year do you think we would be doing this?
I'm, if I had to guess, probably ten times a year. I guess a guess.
Well, once, like, once every six weeks or something?
Maybe once a month or something like that. So, and totally, it's totally a guess, I'm really not sure.
That's fine.
Until we start getting into this and I start learning these processes.
So this truck here is not available, this is just a picture of what you want?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's just a picture of a truck. I have two that are available right now. There's a Cummins, uh, Dodge fifty-five hundred that's available at Kirk up in Bangor. He doesn't anticipate it being there the rest of this week. Uh, there's another, um, truck out of Castle Bay, uh, five fifty with a Powerstroke diesel bed. Uh, that one's available, he didn't tell me when or if we sell it.
And you wanna go with this truck because of the size of the trailer and not in the box?
Uh, yes, yes. I don't wanna undersize, I don't wanna use a three-quarter ton to haul a fourteen thousand pound trailer.
So you're also gonna put a plow on this?
Yes, yes.
Okay then.
From the sewer plant for cleaning the atmosphere or whatever.
Right, right, right.
So the, the Dodge at Quercs are on the plow ready?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
The Ford?
The Ford is plowed.
Both of them?
Ready, yeah.
So now you're looking at the cost of the truck, but you need to incorporate the cost of all?
I'm like, if I had to guess me right now, the, some of the costs I got right now, you're probably looking at seventy, seventy-five for the plow. What you think of it, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money, but you look at a half-ton truck.
You can't buy a half-ton truck, these are one for seventy-five grand.
Sorry, no.
How many yards is our biggest box or one of our wheelers?
Ten yards. Uh, my biggest one would be my freightliner, probably pushing twelve. Yeah. The biggest thing I have, to be honest with you guys, with my trucks, they're older trucks. If I gotta haul this to Conjono across, uh, being pulled, being pulled over by.
Canadian, you know, Canadian.
You know what I'm saying?
You know, but.
So, how would we pay for it?
This will come out of either surplus or CIP.
Right.
And yours?
Yeah, for us.
The sewer CIP.
Waste water, yes.
Waste water, sorry, yeah.
And depending on, like I said, how much it is, that we could, we can contract with Tricommunity. But I hope they have a, a limit or a set size, or you just, if a hundred and twenty a ton if you just drive. Or whether we're allowed to put it into our box and it goes on J C.
Yeah, that's a lot of unanswered questions here at this point.
Yeah, and those are ones we, we don't know, but that's the cost of that per ton. Conjono's cheaper, but it's not necessarily cheaper if you're doing. It, we actually picked this option because in the long run, it's expensive, build it. But it takes out a lot more moisture, so it's a lot less over time because we don't have to pay much for it. Okay, so in terms of funds, and this is through June thirtieth, this is last year's, um, audit. And it, what it had on hand or at the end of the audit in terms of cash or cash equivalents, whether it's CIP or, um, surplus at June thirtieth. Um, about nine hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety to nine hundred thousand. Um, there's more outstanding receivables. And so we're usually at June before people pay ghostly and people don't pay, there was about ninety, I was speaking of like the natural cash. And according to my letter reading down here, restricted, which I read to be CIP, was four hundred fifty-nine and unrestricted was four hundred seventy-three. Now, we have paid out of Rick's CIP since June thirtieth to finish the pump station project.
Are we done with that?
The pump station project, we're done, yes.
The pump stations or are we finished with it?
We're finished, but I'm not sure how much we spent after June thirtieth because we finished up like in November, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we were paying about two hundred thousand on that project, so I don't know before or after. But we also then put fifty thousand back in CIP during the last fiscal year. So I would say that he's still, in terms of the number you're talking about, it's there. He, he's, he's held it. Um, the seventy-five thousand is not gonna get one of these either way, so you could pick CIP. We are gonna, you know, when, when we're gonna, this next project, which is not gonna happen until sometime next year. Um, we're, we're gonna either have additional loan money or we'll see, um, that, or we can increase some of our ERP. He's all right to be able to buy this truck. And what we talked about is call a special town meeting from this, figure out what the closest date you can do to appropriate the funds so that they're available when you find the truck. Cause right now, we just don't have the authority to appropriate out of the council or the people. But if we wait to find a truck, like you said, it takes a month. But he, he knows they're coming, these, these companies are regularly at least getting one here or there, so.
Right, I know.
People are always trying to stop them.
The question is, the sooner we have it, at least he can have it sitting there like not to exceed.
Right.
Um, and unfortunately because it is an appropriation and we didn't appropriate it in June. I don't think anybody would question it, it's just, okay, set a date, you have to post two weeks beforehand. No, seven days beforehand, I don't hope there's anything else to add to that, but do we have any other planning board or that purchase of plan or any other special?
No, I have mine Thursday, but that's it.
But that's not a special town meeting?
Nope.
So. And it's just something we call in front of a council meeting, you need at least, we should. It has to be in person, so it's not like a bowling, so I think we usually go no shorter than three weeks or.
Let's do it. Do we have any other costs associated with this e-watering project that you are looking at?
No.
Not this year.
About this year, about this year.
I don't wanna come back and, uh, eat this and I need that.
Well.
And I'm not trying to sass you, I just, I don't wanna be surprised.
Unexpected. Unexpected, no.
So everything under the, everything under the grant is covered?
Yeah.
Truck would be separate, the trailer's covered?
Under the grant.
There's no other specialized equipment that's not covered under the grant that you were looking at, that we would need?
No. No.
So the grant's covered, the trailer and the tractor?
Okay.
Yes.
Then it, this is by you or by used?
Uh, for the funding, Nancy?
How's it by new?
I'm pretty sure it's gonna be new.
Sometimes you get some good deals, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, he's right, you need, yeah, somebody can trade in a tractor they don't like with five dollars.
A lot, yeah.
Well, and as we were talking about.
If you're just gonna be moving light material.
Well, one of the options here too is there's a, there's a twenty-twenty available too with like three hundred miles on it. It's just a company that bought it.
Okay, that's good.
And I've been looking very hard on that one too.
What's wrong with that?
Nothing.
Okay.
That's right in your mouth.
Yes.
It's new.
This brand's making new, it's twenty-twenty. I'm gonna look at the best option.
No, no.
Trust me, I've got twenty, twenty-six years. I've been working it out for twenty-six years.
Right, nobody here is doubting you're, you're working on thing, nobody.
I just wanna. I'm not gonna stay there and I'm gonna buy the most expensive vehicle, X L T.
I just don't wanna have to buy a helicopter next month because, uh, we need something else.
I'll wait a year for that.
Yeah, but if, I, I, and I get where Pete's coming from, because we can't just write the check out of your CIP.
Right, right. Right.
Yep.
We, if there's, if you can think of anything, then.
Dump bed?
No, no.
What's that?
Is there a dump bed or is that, is it just, is it maybe would have one? Yeah, okay.
This one here would have.
This one has a dump bed, yeah.
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 Yeah, if there.
I can't think of anything Nancy unless that, once the project is finally done.
I mean, the engineers, everything that Jim Leighton's told you, there's no surprises.
I, I can't.
There shouldn't be.
Right, and all that's happening now is get the concrete and then it shuts down.
Well, that ain't even happening here.
That may not.
Because, uh, after, the project started Monday morning. Uh, I think they're only gonna be doing groundwork this year, they're having a hard time getting rebar. It's one thing after another. So I'm pretty sure they're gonna be doing just the groundwork. There's a couple pipes that they're gonna stick in the ground and they're gonna shut down until next spring. I'm almost positive it's gonna happen, there's one thing after another.
All of, every, we have cut the cost covered all the way through, even through June thirtieth before we're gonna be putting anything into it. And if there's also the possibility, we did receive this A R P money call on it, American Recovery Protection Act money.
Yeah.
We did receive our first check, it's sitting in the bank, we're not gonna deal with it today. But there's very restricted uses for that. And then the first is losses, so that's the first thing I'll be doing is calculating with their formula. Uh, the losses that we had last year that we couldn't then put for that. And then there's, it's in the area of healthcare, uh, health insurance, there's some employee, but you can't spend it on much, but you can spend it on sewer or water.
Perfect.
So, in, in terms of, and then we'll get another check next year, if we need to and we don't have, and sometimes we're finding that because it's so restrictive, depending on the services they have, they're trying to figure out how to spend it. Um, so we're not gonna be in that boat, I think that we can, you know, there's certain things you can do, but you can't just like throw, you can't buy the truck possibly, but it could help the bay for some of the, something that's required on the project. So I think we're sewers, if, if anything, there's more money out there if we need it than we can seek, so. I know he's just trying to get this for winter.
Yeah.
Because he wants to move down.
No, I.
And.
I'd like to sort this.
And he did bring it up last, last budget season and we were just.
I have no issue with it.
Budget, yep, yep.
No, it's.
But does it, I'd like to sort this suggestion out, just for the, so we can add, okay, we need to have a special town meeting to appropriate the funds. Our next council meeting is the nineteenth, that gives us enough time to have this thing published.
That, that's a little too short, I gotta check, I think, I don't know if you can use go two weeks out.
When I, if it's seven days, we've got fourteen, so we've got a week to play with.
I need to check that.
So, I, I'm throwing this out for discussion.
Usually you have to put it in the newspaper, it has to run so many days, newspapers not that, but.
For a special town meeting?
I believe so.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it'll only be in the paper with thirteen.
So.
As, as quick, how about this, as quickly as possible?
But even so, if. Well, well, right, so if we're on the fifth, if, if we have to go even four weeks, we're talking like November first. And he's got the authority, he's gonna be looking right up to them, and if there's something that's gonna come out, he's not ordering anything.
Well, he needs the truck for winter, November first is the beginning of winter.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And it's gonna be other people out there looking for trucks, so.
Well, well.
Okay, here's, let me finish my suggestion, then we can go back.
Let me find out what the earliest possible date is, so we're open to that and say whatever it is.
Just like that.
Let's find that, yeah. My suggestion is, is that if we can do it, special timing in the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah.
Okay, and in the meantime, talk to Quercs. I, I personally like the Dodge better because of the Cummins diesel versus the Powerstroke. I think the Cummins is a better, a better diesel and a better, truck's a better built than a Ford. That's my personal preference, I think if you, lies for us to, okay? Talk to Quercs, see what the, if they would hold it for us for two weeks?
Yeah, they won't.
They won't, or what they would need for down payment? And give answers.
Do you basically say, ask him to deal, take the down payment now?
And hold it for us until we have a special town meeting?
And then to hang on to it till.
That I can ask.
And if, if, if it does not get approved, well then, see if we can get our down payment back, or at least we, we will have secured that particular truck at whatever price you can negotiate with them. Cause Pete's right, and everybody's right, we all know, there's a car shortage, there's a truck shortage, and it's only gonna.
It's gonna get worse.
It's only gonna get worse.
Yeah.
Rebar shortage.
Right, I, you know, I went to the hardware store today looking for a funnel, a flue insert.
Yeah.
It's someplace on a ship, probably in San Francisco back.
Yeah, they're all stacked up out there, so.
You know, so, they tell, today on the news, they tell everybody do a Christmas shopping early, cause he don't know what to do today. I think that.
Wait, one plus that twenty-twenty?
But I, I, I'm saying.
Twenty-twenty?
Oh.
It's a Dodge, uh, three, I think they call it, fifty-five hundred?
Yeah.
So it's a ramp?
Yeah.
Fifty-five hundred, and that has the dump bodies plowed ready?
Yes.
Anywhere to come in.
Yes.
See if you can lock it down.
Well, what do you guys wanna do for, uh, down payment?
That we can do.
Ten percent, you wanna take your run out of my budget at wastewater for now, then we just.
I say we take it out of your budget, I'm, I'm throwing this for, so for discussion. I say we take it from your budget, put it towards it, and then we'll.
Reimburse it after?
We'll reimburse it after, uh, we, after the special town meeting and the funds are approved.
If they're approved.
If, oh, excuse me, yes, if the funds are approved.
Now what happens on his end? If he makes that deal and they say, okay, well, we'll do that, but if you guys don't approve it.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm putting it on the table.
We may lose our down payment, that's why I come over here with a team, yeah.
That, that's why I'm putting it on the table for discussion.
Disass, yeah, disass.
Have you ever dealt with why did Ford reach those trucks?
Yeah, I did, I called them today too, they had nothing available.
There's.
I mean, I know they don't have them at dollings.
Yeah.
Dollings will hold the vehicle for you. They'll store it in the back block if they could get it, they don't have much stock.
Recently?
Yes, recently, there's a guy there that's really good, his, um, son was the girl, or still is the girls' basketball coach here at high school, his name is Ken. And like they'll hide a vehicle for you, like so, it gives you a touch.
Yeah, I called, I called, I called dollings, dollings is not a commercial truck.
No, they're not, that's why I said why they're.
They deal with the one ton, so the thirty-five hundred and below, yeah.
I was wondering if they could get it for you.
But, uh, if you wanna go the four hundred, uh, forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred in a Dodge or the F four fifty, the F five fifty, you're going to get commercial.
Yeah.
So, and then you're limited on the dealerships, without every dealership, like this, it doesn't deal with commercial trucks.
It's a commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That's why it's word on campus, so we can all run our users, to make it.
Yeah, no, call and, uh, see if they'll accept, uh, down payment and if we get it with, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't see it, it's.
Why would, why would they not? I don't, I don't.
They're, they're.
I can't, I can't per, I can't foresee a reason why that people would not appropriate the money for a truck that we need.
Right.
Well, I agree.
Especially out of a, especially out of an account that's already healthy and that there's already money waiting in the wings to backfill. It's, it's a no-brainer.
Kind of something you need anyway, with the, with the e-watering system, I mean, you can't, uh, there's no other feasible, uh, alternatives.
And something that you're gonna have to have.
No. There, there was the option of waiting till next year, but I'm just not comfortable with waiting and waiting, waiting. I don't think this is gonna get any better. And if I had to wait till next spring and there's nothing available, then we have to order it, then we're waiting another, possibly another year, then we're gonna be in issues with.
I'm with you, bro. Yeah.
Like, like I said, I threw out there for us the discussion.
I'm with you, bro. Yeah, let's go.
So let's, we'll check that out tomorrow morning, what if there any restrictions are, or two weeks is what it is? Then basically what I would say right now then is let's at least approve what the warrant article would be. Because you, if we approve what the warrant article's gonna be on that special town meeting, then we don't have to have a meeting before that. So we should word it.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, it's, it's, it's gonna be not exceed probably a certain amount of money, you know, so see if you can get that wording today
Let's word it then.
Yeah.
and approve that warrant article statement.
So you're. Your. Your number for the truck here?
Forty.
Seventy, seventy-three to seventy-six, is that including the plow that you need?
That would include the plow.
And you're.
That's on the Dodge?
That would be the, the Dodge, a couple of my, I've written the paperwork, I believe was sixty-six thousand. That Dodge is actually cheaper than the Powerstroke, the smoking.
Really?
Yeah, it was. I believe the Powerstroke was sixty-eight and that one there is a sixty-six and change. And you're gonna tack another six, maybe seven, or maybe a, a plow, a stainless steel.
Heat flower, yeah. Yeah. So are you okay with the Dodge? I mean.
I'm okay with the Dodge, yeah, I'm okay with either one.
We don't have to define that, as long as you get them, you know, up to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Up to, exactly.
Exactly, yeah. I just wanna know what, what's the, what's the, what's the kind?
I, I would, personally, I would probably use something like seventy-five and let me.
That's just what I was thinking.
Is that, is seventy-five enough?
That's fine.
It should be, that's it, the truck is sixty-six when he called me today.
Okay.
And I had seven-two for the plow, where did that come up to?
Yeah.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three change, seventy-two change, seventy-three change.
Two.
Yeah.
Seventy-seven.
So seventy-five is fair?
Yeah.
Yeah. One, one, one other thing, let me just go, I brought a trolley in. Report. I just had the thought. That's what, when the halftime is two o'clock?
It said two times. Yeah, the severe duty, heavy duty.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we did this.
It's on an X L T, it doesn't have all the bells and the slams, it's an XL.
Make it work.
It's make it work.
Make it work, that's what we need.
Yeah, so we don't want.
I don't know, I didn't think of this before, but this is a possibility and it just came to me, that's what we talked about. We did this in the last year, one of Rick's years, we spent directly out of the appropriated capital expense. Normally when we appropriate this, it's to go into CIP.
Okay.
And we appropriated sixty thousand. Which means right now, we could grab that sixty thousand and put it in CIP, but now we're talking about special town meeting calling out. We could, there's nothing that says we can't spend the sixty thousand here.
That's already in there.
That's already in there, it's not enough to cover for yet.
But it, but at least that would be, that would be enough to secure a down payment and hold that truck.
Or maybe pay for, maybe pay for the whole truck and then we appropriate the CIP to cover it, which, which is.
Not even.
Yeah, neither that or.
Because this is gonna just go back into CIP.
You have to take a quick loan on it and then just.
Go back in any.
It's gonna go back in, and what happened is one year we had a, we had to get a grant, actually it was the first grant, the planning grant in December.
Right, yeah.
Some four more back in the chute.
And we like immediately got this, you know, twenty, it was a twenty-six thousand dollar, but they were only gonna give six, we had to pay the twenty for the planning grant and we had to do it, and we actually spent right out of the loan money. So, that actually.
Is there anything else in the budget that we could pull from to make up the difference instead of going to the people?
So you're.
Is there anything in the budget?
What does he have for line item? What do you have for line item for a truck?
Maybe the all we're gonna be missing is six thousand.
A couple of my, I don't remember.
Okay.
That's, that's sixteen, right?
What, what we did.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen.
Eight in the night.
Wait, wait, wait.
Our, our green pickup.
Certainly relieves of having a special town meeting.
Plus the plow, plus the year.
Seventy-two, seventy-three.
If we get that, I'd feel okay with that.
If he, if, if he overspend this line item right now, but underspend, I mean, he could spend the total and we know that, that actually passes the test because we are spending it on capital improvement, we're spending it out of the budget.
You okay with that?
I'm good, I think I'm reading all mine.
We could if there were an opportunity for a special town.
Okay.
The pounds, the pounds.
Another.
You're reading all mine, you're a good man, so.
Okay, another thing that I'm throwing onto the table, okay, the green pickup.
Yeah.
Belongs to wastewater.
Yes.
So.
You can buy it?
Would you?
Highway?
Sell it to.
Would you sell it to, to the highway department?
I would sell it to the recycling center.
To the recycling center?
At this point.
For, let's say.
It still, it still books value that twenty, twenty thousand.
Okay, so we sell the truck.
They may not have twenty thousand, but it's okay.
Okay, so we sell the truck.
Cause that's still, wow.
Alright, so if it's valued at twenty and we sell the, I'm throwing this out for discussion, we end, we end up selling that, the green pickup to the recycling center for fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
With the sixty we get there, we get the seventy-five thousand to pay for his piece of equipment.
Right. Right. Right.
We haven't had to go to the voters, we've done this all within the public view and within public discussion and nobody, there's not a, we could, tomorrow morning, he can go to Quercs and say.
Give me the truck.
Give me the truck, sharpen your pencil, I've got the check ready.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you gonna find somewhere to recycle them?
Well.
And actually, I would.
We're gonna go to a special town meeting.
Well, I was thinking about that, if, if. That would give time to set up a special town meeting, buy the truck, delay the purchase of the, oh, nevermind, delay.
You can.
Yeah, never mind, I, I.
No, no, keep going.
Well, oh, I was thinking if we have a special.
He may, they may not be able, we'll have to look and see where we're at revenues and expenses with, and actually we're at that point, it's like the first quarter.
Yeah. Right.
To possibly look at that. We certainly, I don't know if there's twenty thousand, but it could be a, you know, buy it over a couple of years. The other thing is to see if recycling had excess money from.
Well, we're talking seventy-three, two.
Yeah. But we could.
And so thirteen, two, roughly.
We use CIP funds for the recycling truck.
From, uh, recycling, recovering the cost, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that a ten, what about thirteen?
So we sell. So, so we sell the, the green pickup to recycling, let's say for thirteen, and they pay that over, let's say, four years.
That's fine.
Four, five years.
Yeah.
That way we're not depleting, we're not depleting.
That, that do.
Just show it in our audit that I'm doing that and, uh, there's nothing wrong with that. Just show it in our audit, that might do it, and uh, make something wrong there.
So show me on that, then, then we're making a yearly payment, pay thirteen thousand over four, that's what, thirty thirty, let's say thirty five hundred dollars a year.
Thirty hundred dollars a year.
That's built into the recycle budget to pay back the thirteen thousand.
Cause that truck is.
Is still a good truck.
It's got a lot of life left, and and the only thing they're gonna be using it for, basically, is Hollis.
It's still, yeah. Hollis. Hollis.
Hollis.
Hollis is gonna take care of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Hollis is gonna take care of it, Hollis, so.
So it happened in my mind, Hollis.
And that truck's gonna have, it's gonna, we'll, the truck will all live to payments.
Oh, that's for sure.
You know, and I, and I'm suggesting, rather than, and I'm throwing this out for the art, just throwing it on the table. Rather than pleading his account will pay for sixty thousand, why don't we pay it in twelve thousand increments for five years?
Yeah, she, we have the money appropriated.
He's a.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay, well.
The money's there.
It's coming back in C I P, we don't, right.
Okay, so, okay, so we take, we we.
Yeah.
Which is what we normally do, but because we've appropriated, we do have the time to appropriate.
Right. That's with your bourbon idea.
Okay, so my first idea.
And you're all on board with it.
Okay, so the first idea is that we take the sixty thousand, we put towards that, take the green truck. Establish the price for the recycling center, recycling center builds into their budget, excellent dollars for the next three or four years.
Whatever the balance is from the sixty thousand, we'll, we'll figure it out and we'll set up a payment plan for recycling to pay back.
Yes. Right.
We'll look into something.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, let me tell you what also is in the audit, okay, and and I just opened up the schedule, I, in the audit, and we look at it all the time, but I'm more familiar is. What our actual budget was and um what we've spent in terms of, here I'll have, in terms of appropriation though, this was an appropriation.
And what we spent. That's what we have for surplus in the account.
So, if we had, and I can't, I don't know if I can compare it here, cause I can't probably break down recycling revenue exactly. In the audit, but I can break it down in trio, we underspent our budget in, at June thirty by fifteen thousand. So the difference between the recycling budget and the recycling revenue of June thirty last year, technically, that money could be, it's gone just into government surplus. At this point, without being directed, but we could direct that because that's when we added excess of revenue. It could, it could be directed, actually, sometimes the auditors, they don't compute, you can't take it forward unless you spend it on the same thing, but recycling, it's there. If we said recycling was gonna pay, technically, recycling acts like sewer, then whatever excess it has should go to recycling.
Right, correct, cause that's.
Um, although, you know, that might have been, but it's, we can figure it out, okay? We can figure it out.
Yes, we're here to go special town meeting.
Come down, right down.
Right, right, right.
So, tomorrow morning, first thing on your desk.
I'm, I'm the one who need to hatch this anymore.
Yeah.
Walk in and call them and say, hey, I want the truck.
Yeah.
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 It's legal, we have the funds.
Yeah.
We got the funds, do it.
Do it, good, let's, we're on it.
So we're on it.
No helicopter next month.
No helicopter, yeah.
You guys don't lie, they just need my dollar.
Yes.
Go for it, thanks.
She doesn't get a helicopter.
She doesn't get a helicopter, yeah. Sauber sees us all here, so I'll take your, take your.
Sorry, Rick.
Well.
Do we need a motion?
Um, actually.
Can you use that money or not?
I think it's good to, you know, if you guys support the program.
Yeah, good idea.
All right.
Um, and say that we're gonna use a current year C I P allotment, which means that we're not pulling out of C I P, we're just not putting into either, but that's, it's really good for that truck.
Good.
Um, it would help at some point to let the public.